Welcome, everyone. I am Lori Pontius, Auburn's Court Treasurer, and I am calling to order the second of two required public hearings for the City of Auburn's Oprah Public Facilities Program grant that we are pursuing on behalf of the Auburn Court Duesenberg Automobile Museum to assist with the funding of their showroom facade preservation project. At this time, I am turning the hearing over to Matt Bondren, who is our public hearing officer and grant administrator for this project.
Thank you, Lori. Welcome, everyone. I'm Matt Bondren, and I'm with the Northeastern Indiana Regional Coordinating Council, known as NIRCC, and I assist communities in Adams, Allen, DeKalb, and Wells Counties with the preparation of grant applications and with the administration of the grants once received. I am the grant administrator for this project and the designated public hearing officer. As far as the structure of this hearing, I'm going to give an overview of the project and the grant process. Once I am finished, those who wish to make comments or ask questions will have the opportunity to do so. If you wish to make comments, please start by stating your name so we can keep accurate minutes of the hearing. If you have a comment or a question but do not want to speak, we have comment sheets at the back that you can fill out and leave for us. If you would like to write a letter of support and need, please let us know after the meeting and we will coordinate with you. If needed, either myself, the museum, or the architect will respond after a comment has been heard. Also, please make sure that you sign the sign-in sheet of the public hearing before you leave, and it's at the front there. So, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to discuss the museum showroom facade preservation project for which the City of Auburn is applying to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs, known as OCPRA, on behalf of the museum for a Public Facilities Program grant that can be utilized for historic preservation projects. The city is the applicant and the museum is the sub-recipient. As most of you are aware, the museum is the original Auburn Automobile Company Administration building, built in 1929. It is listed on both the Indiana and National Registers of Historic Sites and Places. It is also one of the buildings included in the National Historic Landmark Designation for the Auburn Court Duesenberg Automobile Facility. Over time, this historic building, due to age and water infiltration, has developed issues that need to be addressed. And given its historical significance and pedigree, the preservation of the museum is critical. As such, in 2016, a Historic Structures Report, or HSR, was completed to determine the building's condition, needs, and recommended improvements. From the HSR, the museum developed a multi-phase improvement plan, estimated at $10 million, to preserve the structure. First, focusing on sealing the building envelope, which includes the roof and the vertical exterior, followed by interior restoration. Phase one was completed in 2024 and replaced the roof and the HVAC equipment. This project has been designed by Martin Riley Architects and Engineers and will address the vertical exterior architectural and structural needs of the museum showroom. It will restore the masonry, the window lintels, and the windows and doors of the showroom portion of the museum. Following the completion of the proposed project, additional phases will be completed to address remaining interior and exterior restoration on the remaining sections of the building. The proposed preservation project will cost $1.6 million. $750,000 will come from grant funds, and $850,000 will come from the museum's restricted capital campaign account funds. This full amount is philanthropic funding that has been donated to the museum. The City of Auburn will not be providing any direct financial assistance to this project outside of providing, assisting with, applying for the grant on behalf of the museum. The state funding is federal Community Development Block grant, or CDBG money, allocated from HUD and administered by OCPRA. To qualify for this grant, the city, on behalf of the museum, must show that the project meets one of three national objectives. It must either benefit low-to-moderate income individuals, provide for the prevention or elimination of slum and blight, or be of urgent need, usually associated with disasters. This project will qualify by preventing slum and blight to an existing structure. To meet this requirement, the city has passed the slum and blight resolution, declaring the museum a blighted structure, in turn making it eligible for the federal funding. All materials utilized for the restoration activities will meet or exceed the specifications identified and recommended in the HSR. All improvements associated with the restoration of the museum showroom facade will occur on the showroom portion only of the building. The project does not include any excavation or ground disturbance. Acquisition of property was not required to complete this project. A plan to minimize displacement and provide assistance to those displaced has been prepared by the city and is also available to the public. However, this project will result in no displacement of any persons or businesses. The proposed project includes the filing masonry, lintel, and window and door restoration activities to the showroom portion of the museum. Masonry restoration includes: cleaning of the entire showroom exterior, removal and replacement of any damaged or deteriorating brick, stone, and mortar, repointing of existing mortar joints where the original mortar has eroded or cracked, rehabilitation or replacement of any other masonry elements such as the lintel support areas or structural cracks as needed, and the application of sealant to masonry joints or other related material transitions. The lintel restoration includes: removal and replacement of corroded or damaged lintels with new galvanized steel lintels, designed to support the masonry above the storefront windows, restoration of any existing lintels that do not warrant full replacements, and all lintel replacements and restorations will include appropriate flashing, waterproofing, and sealant necessary to prevent water infiltration at the joints. Rehabilitation and replacement of any damaged decorative plaster pieces on the interior, such as the capitals and pilasters and cornices, will also be included in the lintel restoration. And then, the window and door restoration includes the filing. First, it includes the rehabilitation of all the existing first-floor storefront windows and includes removal of all existing glass and sealants, disassembly, restoration, and reinstallation of copper, of the copper-covered division bar, transom bar, and sash, resetting of salvaged or new glass with new weather stripping and sealants, application of a new high-performance paint finish as appropriate, removal of existing and installation of new window film and window lettering, rehabilitation of the window surrounds, including replastering, painting, and staining. And then, second, it includes the rehabilitation of all existing third-floor steel sashed windows, including the removal of all existing glass and putty, cleaning the steel down to bare metal, application of a new high-performance paint finish, reglazing with salvaged or new glass, installation of any films or sealants as required, and the rehabilitation of window surrounds, including replastering, painting, and staining. And third, it includes the rehabilitation of the main showroom entrance and includes rehabilitation of the wood frames, doors, trim, and hardware, resealing existing door and window glass, and the installation of flashing and appropriate sealants. Sorry, that was a lot to get through. If you look around the room, I actually do have the full scope hanging up on, on a few places if you want to review that before you leave tonight. So, the grant application process is a two-phase process with a proposal and an application phase that includes a public hearing prior to each phase. As stated earlier, this is the second public hearing, and the first was held in April. The proposal was submitted on April 17th, and the application must be submitted no later than June 20th. OCPRA conducted a site visit in May following the submission of the proposal and discussed the project and provided feedback on the proposal to both the city and the museum, as well as to myself, so we can beef up the application. The city and the museum should receive notice of the grant award in late August 2025, which would allow the preservation project to begin in May of 2026 and be completed in December of 2026. To date, the city and the museum have completed all requirements associated with the submission of a grant application, including the completion of an environmental review, passing a slum and blight resolution, completing a four-factor analysis for language proficiency, adopting a displacement plan, and issuing a public, the public hearing notices. Public participation is important, and that's demonstrated by attendance and comments at the hearings, so please sign the sign-in sheet if you haven't already done so, and please voice your questions and comments regarding the project. Like I said earlier, if you wish to provide a written comment instead of speaking, we have the comment sheets at the back that you can fill out and leave tonight. In addition, the museum currently has a planning survey live that can be completed through June 13th, so this Friday. And ideally, this Friday by 5:00 PM. That way, Brandon can get everything to me, and then I can scramble to get it all put together over the weekend, so we have it ready for the submission next week. The link is available at both the museum's and the city's Facebook pages, or you can talk to Brandon after the meeting, and I'm sure he'll provide you with the info. If you are a resident of Auburn and have not completed the survey yet, please do so, as the results of the survey will be included in the application. So, at this point, we will open the hearing up for questions and comments. We just asked that you come up here and start by stating your name and address so we can accurately maintain the minutes. And if needed, following your, your questions or, or your comments or questions, someone will respond to them if necessary. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brandon Anderson. I have the honor to serve as the Executive Director of the Auburn Court Duesenberg Automobile Museum. I am also an Auburn resident living at 815 Midway Drive. This project is paramount to the museum's future. As we all know, and as we tout, when you walk into our museum, you walk into a time machine. We bring back 1930 to life. We have, in the past, we have spent the, the time in our collections to bring that building back to 1930, to bring the airplane back that was there in 1930, the Dodge boat, to make sure when you walk in there, you hear the period music, you feel that experience, you walk that, those same steps that Alan Leanie Gordon-Bierig did. We are an incredible institution that continues to grow and thrive. I think we all know in this room, as I see all of you, which I know just about, I think I know every single person in here, we know that this contributes to Auburn's community in so many ways, and of course, Northeast Indiana. Our identity is defined basically by our classic automotive heritage. We see the houses that are along our streets. We see the buildings that were used, say, by McIntyre, for example. We see our building that was saved in 1973 when we purchased it. Imagine if we weren't there on Wayne Street and there was just a historical marker of what was. This building and this museum contributes greatly to Northeast Indiana, to the state of Indiana, and also to our country. There are only 44 national historic landmarks in the state of Indiana, and they are only in 23 counties. In 2005, thankfully, we were named a National Historic Landmark. That means the Secretary of the Interior stated that this building is important to every single American citizen because of the history that happened there and in our unique town. Imagine if our museum wasn't in this original building. Imagine if we allowed these projects to go and the cost that would accumulate after that. We have to attack these now. We've taken care of the roof. We've taken care of the HVAC. We started at the top-down. Now, we're working on the sides. This is a part of another phase for our continual project to preserve this building in perpetuity for the benefit of not only our citizens of Auburn, but also everybody in the country and the world. As a reminder, we get visitation from around the globe because Auburn had distribution facilities in 89 different countries. So, every day, every week, we are seeing people from across this globe that come to Auburn. And it's our collection. It's our exhibits. It's our programs, and it's our building. It is a part of our legacy, and we must preserve it now for the future. Thank you.
I hate public speaking, so I'll just get it over with. My name's Angela Mapes Turner. I'm a lifelong resident of Auburn. I live at 711 Morningstar Road. I've already submitted a letter of support, so I'm not going to speak very long, but I just wanted to say that I think this is an appropriate use of these funds and that the, that the museum has been a great community partner to so many different organizations and that the museum has done what it needs to do on its part to benefit from these funds. I, I think what you said, Brandon, about imagine if there was just a historical marker there really resonates. I've been involved with Eckhart Public Library's Capital Campaign to rebuild after its arson fire, and now I've served as the president of the Library Foundation. And I'm not speaking on behalf of them, but I know what it takes to preserve a historic building. And so many times in our community, we hear people say, "Well, why didn't they do something sooner? Why didn't, why didn't we do this?" Or, "Why didn't we, you know, do this when it was needed?" And I don't want that to happen to this museum. I have a personal connection, having had my high school job there, so I met many people from around the world who were just, they came for the cars and they were knocked away by the building. They were just blown away by how beautiful it was. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
We all love public speaking. I'm Sarah Payne. I live at 109 Greenhurst Court. I am a former Executive Director for the Auburn Court Duesenberg Festival, but I'm speaking on behalf of just my family's passion around the car history here. And I just want to say, I, what Angela said about the importance of this building and its impact to our community really resonates with me. And I really appreciate Brandon's forward-thinking and proactive approach to the, I guess, not just maintenance, but preservation of this really important structure for our community. I think so often, we're very reactive in this community and in rural communities across our state. So, the fact that we're being proactive and thinking forward about what it takes to, to maintain these buildings is really important. So, thank you, and I fully support this project.
I too hate public speaking. I'm more of a writer. Thank you. My name is Lucy Blakey. I live in Fort Wayne, 6601 Oak Mill Place. I wrote the 50th Anniversary Book for the museum and got to know the museum very personally, it felt like. I'm also online a lot. I do all the marketing and social media for Rolling into Roanoke Car Show. So, I'm online a lot, and I see all these posts from random car, and they have Duesenbergs, and they have Auburns, and people comment, and I read comments. So many comments about the museum from all over the world, and how many people say, "Oh, my gosh, it's on my bucket list." "Oh, my gosh, I, I was there. It was, it was amazing. You have to go. You have to go." I totally support this, and it would just be terrible if this did not go through, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, A-C-D-A-M. Amen.
I'm Frank Usek, 6033 Deer Hollow Road, Auburn, Indiana. We're transplants to the area, and we learned about the museum after we moved here. We got involved with the cars. Then, the museum is volunteers, currently on the Board of Trustees. So, I've moved up in, in my involvement with the museum, but I'm also a docent. So, I talk to people who've taken, come and visited the museum, and they're blown away by the experience they have. They come to see the cars, and they realize that they're sitting in the building that the Auburn Automobile Company built as a dealer showroom and administrative building. And so many couples, the man gets involved with the cars and watching and doing, and the woman sits there and looks at the museum. They look at the building, the architecture inside, the window lintels, everything that takes and makes up the, the building. And they come away with a different experience sometimes than the man does, but it's part of the total experience of coming and visiting the museum. And it helps to bring people to Auburn, like Lucy said, you know, from all over the world. So, it's an important thing to take and preserve and, and to keep standing in its present state to take and help support the, the community. So, thank you.
My name is Diane Wells, and I live at 1106 Packard Place here in Auburn. I first came to Auburn in 1976, and at that time, I had some involvement with the museum. Then I was gone for many years, and when I returned three years ago, one of the first things I wanted to do was to make contact with the museum and see if I might be able to volunteer there. So fortunately for me, they took me on, and I've worked as a volunteer in the library and the archives, and primarily as a host and a docent. So I want to second everything that Frank just said, because those of us who are on the floor every day, we see the people and they come in. And just the last couple of days, we've had people from New Zealand, from England, they come from all over. And just this morning, I was there this morning, and I don't know how many times this happens, people walk through the entry and they start to enter the showroom and they just stop. They're just struck by the beauty of that building and of that showroom. And the Art Deco architecture is unique. It's very important architecturally, and it's received recognition from all over the country and all over the world as a prime example of an Art Deco building from that time period. And I just give my full support to this building and to this museum, and just hope that we can maintain it for so many more years to come and that everyone that comes in, comes to town, will be able to enjoy it. Because how many small towns like Auburn have this kind of, this kind of place or this kind of attraction to welcome people? And people are really quite amazed at what they can find here in Auburn, Indiana. Thank you.
Is the city in support of this? Kind of funny, because I don't like public speaking either, and I'm sitting up here by myself. Anyway, the city of Auburn is committed to encouraging and supporting the preservation of its history and legacy in every way possible.
Hello, my name's Chris Straw. I live here in Auburn, been Auburn resident all my life. I live at 1501 North Dewey Street in Auburn. And I think one of the perspectives that, when I see us talking about this money for this project, it's a preservation of a building that more importantly, it's an investment back in our community, and the attraction that it does to this town, to bring people to this town. I have an opportunity to travel a lot, and when I run into people, they ask where you're from. That's typically the first conversation. And I usually start with Fort Wayne, because there's a slight chance they might have an idea where that's at. And then we get into details, and actually, I live in this little town just north of Fort Wayne called Auburn. Oh yeah, I know Auburn. You know, you guys have a great museum there? We sure do. And, you know, so I think when I look at the dollar amounts here, I know we've spent a lot more on a lot less, and it's really cool to think that we're spending this to preserve a building, but really to more invest in our future. Thank you.
I'm not quite as old as the building, but I'm pushing it. I'm Ken Wilcox, and I'm one of the volunteers. I've had some experiences down there at the museum. We get people from all over the world. About a month ago, I had a German couple, it was her third time, she said we had to come back. While these people are here at the museum, they're going to other museums, they're staying in the hotels, they're buying food at the restaurants, and on and on, they're putting money into this town. So the town's going to benefit as well, and we've got to take care of the place. When you get older, and I can attest to this, you get older, you get more maintenance that needs to be done. That's just a fact of life. I met Patrick Henry. Now, I'm not that old, it wasn't the original Patrick Henry, but Patrick Henry is from Marion, Ohio, and him and his wife came in two weeks ago Monday. And he said, your mayor is Dave Clark, right? And I said, yeah. And I wondered, what's this about? Well, he said, I'm thinking I'm going to write him a letter about Auburn. What did we do? I couldn't believe this. But he said, all of the restaurants at the hotel, come in here, you start telling us about the cars. He said, everybody in Auburn is so friendly and so polite. We drove around town, you have beautiful homes, well-kept lawns, I wish Marion looked that good. On a personal note, I was in the Air Force in Germany from 1957 to 1960. We were part of the Berlin airlift. We kept the planes in the corridors going from West Germany into West Berlin. You had three 20-mile-wide corridors. Right there in that museum, over the years, I have met six of the pilots, and a guy from my squadron that lives right down in the south end of Indiana. So I have a personal reason to see that going, but if, you know, if you've got a nice big diamond, you don't go throw it in the gutter.
I have a question. If there's anyone in the room that's either a volunteer or has children that have gone to the museum as part of a field trip or an educational experience, if there's any out there that could have some fun on that? I don't have my own kids, but I do sign up for events where we invite a lot of kids, so I'll speak on that.
Yes.
Amber Kakamo, I'm also a Fort Wayne resident, but I run the DeKalb County Visitors Bureau. So speaking to the kids that we invite into the community, so my job is to go out there and speak about DeKalb County. And once again, so when I'm out and about, I say, hi, I'm Amber Kakamo from DeKalb County, and they go, what? And I say, from Auburn. They go, oh, the cars. So that's 90% of my conversation, so it's always a nice connection and a segue. That being said, we sign up for events to capture connections and kids of things that we wouldn't otherwise. I'm going to give you an example of just this past Saturday. Hey, Alicia, we signed up for PBS Explorer Day at Parkview Field in Fort Wayne. We're going to put a table up, can you help me get a car there to engage the kids? So she drove one of the ACD cars down in Auburn. It was a fan favorite, and we were able to get in front of 1,300 kids that the vast majority probably would have never, ever came here in their life. So it's about establishing that connection and making the invitation available. I've had conversations with each one of the superintendents, even within this community, to say, what's the field trip program look like? Is it only the fourth graders for Indiana history? Are we inviting the rest of the schools to come in through the museums? So those conversations are starting to happen, where we're also, sometimes we're getting to just invite the people within our own community, because we've grown up with it, and it's kind of a staple for us, that re-invitation of getting people back within the community. But I also go to Las Vegas, Hershey, you know, Brandon goes to 12 concours a year. So it's kind of like a working board. You have certain communities that kind of sit and stay in their community and just focus on what they know, but we are a very active board, we're a very active community. And simply put, Auburn is not the Auburn we know and love without the Auburn Cordezenburg Automobile Museum, so, thank you.
My name is Laura Brinkman, and I live at 1605 Allison Boulevard. My husband Larry and I have lived there in that home for 45 years. My kids went to school here, they went to field trips at the museum all of the time. I worked at the museum for 41 years, and so my kids were in and out of that place all of the time. They were so proud that their mom worked there. And I have to tell you, in the beginning, I started there in 1978, and we had cars in the front showroom. The museum had been in existence for four years at that time. Thank God, John Martin Smith and several local people really got involved and made that place happen. And I say so much, blood, sweat, and tears went into that place, but you can't imagine what it was like at the time, and we didn't even have heat in the offices. I mean, it has come so far, and the entire community has been so involved in, the city of Auburn has always been supportive, the museum has always been loved, and I'm just so proud of that and so proud of what Brandon and all you folks are doing, because it's gone to a whole nother level, and that's what the place deserves. It has so many aspects. It's got the art, the Art Deco, it's got education, it has the cars, the mechanics. It's just an unbelievable source of educational activity, and it deserves to be and must really be saved. And it does take a lot of maintenance. It's been through a lot of maintenance, and it's got a lot more maintenance. It's always going to need something, because it's always growing, and it's very much worth it. I think Auburn supports it well, and it supports Auburn well, and brings a lot of people and a lot of outside money in. You see some places that, you know, they might turn the money over in their community, but that place brings in a lot of money to us, and I'm just really thankful that this is happening to the place again, and I think that's all I have to say.
I am Lori Geiger, new to this community about a year or so. I'm the volunteer coordinator for the museum, and when I look at that building, I mean, it's gorgeous, but it houses so much more than that. Our volunteers make such an economic impact on that museum, almost like a service in kind, maybe to match with that grant, but we have about 70 volunteers that that museum houses. In 2024, they served 8,825 hours in that museum for events, kind of an economic value of 307,000. So that, when I look at that building, it houses that volunteer family, it really provides inspiration. We came to Auburn, my 18-year-old son was volunteering with the pit crew, and it evolved into, we've now purchased property here because of the community, the museum, the people, the cars aren't too shabby, that beautiful building. So, what a great, I think, project that meets the scope of what Okra, I think, is looking for, so highly support it. Did you need my address?
Yes.
Okay. 1845 County Road 10, Ashley.
Hi, Mike Payne, also of 109 Greenhurst Court, Auburn, Indiana. Born and raised right here in DeKalb County. For about 10, 12 years now, I've been involved with the ACD Festival, and then was honored a couple of years ago to be on the Board of the Museum. And I think one of the bigger honors for me is that my son Charlie has spent a lot of time in the museum and went there in middle school and high school and played a statue one day, and, you know, as part of the things, and to see his involvement, you know, he's taken a heavy role in the festival, and he's the one that parks the cars uptown after the parade and won't let anybody else help with it outside of him and his crew. He says, no, I got it. So he just loves it, and that kind of involvement and that kind of young spirit is really what we're after, and all the more reason to preserve this wonderful building and being very active with the festival, you know, to have this kind of heritage in Auburn is something that most other communities would just, you know, give a lot for and are pretty envious of. And I, like Chris, travel a while, too, and I say, well, you know, have you heard of Auburn? We either get, yeah, or, well, yeah, there's a lot of Auburns, yep, but have you heard of the Auburn Automobile? Well, yeah, well, there's only one Auburn in the US that has the direct link, it was the home, and that's this one. And when the people come in to visit us, I work at MTI here in town, and when people come in to visit us, they usually visit us early so they can try to get over to the museum while they're in town, and the economic development from that, another key aspect of it. So obviously, in full support of this resolution, this initiative, and proud to be a part of it as a member of the museum, and many years to come. Thank you.
My name is Richard Criss. I'm from Fort Wayne. I have the great pleasure to be able to help preserve these cars themselves. I can tell you a story about when I first came to Fort Wayne. I was into British motorcycles, and I came to Auburn to go to Bushy Cycle Sales. And later, when I found out there was a museum there, I said, oh, I'd go see what the museum is. Turns out, it was in the same exact building that Bushy Cycle Sales was in. And at that time, it was just a greasy old, you know, motorcycle shop, and after that, it even had a machine shop in the showroom. And to say that that building got preserved and didn't get torn down, didn't get 15 garage doors put into it or something like that, is kind of an amazing thing. So I love to tell the story about that building and the number, the few number of museums in the world, I think there's only one, that is in its own original headquarters. So I think that has to be definitely maintained. It's as good a story as the cars are.
My name is Sue Bauermeister, and I live at 3526 County Road 35, Auburn, Indiana. I spoke at the last meeting, but I have, I wanted to say that I came here 33 years ago, and my husband and I went to the museum as one of our first things, because we actually moved here, and the atmosphere there was just so fantastic, just the building just makes you feel so great. It's like going back in time. We love like Williamsburg and all these places, and this is right up there with them. And the fact that the building needs such help in being restored is very, very important, and I really, really hope that this will all work out for us, because it's so important to keep this building and everything that goes on there in our community. That's all I wanted to say.
So just overall, for everyone, I didn't speak, which is fine. Is there a consensus in the room that the museum is a part of Auburn's identity? I will acknowledge that, pretend not. And also that the museum is important to the economic vitality of Auburn and the growth of Auburn? Oh, that the preservation of the museum is needed? Thank you, everyone. Does anyone else like to speak?